Welcome to the City Commission Meeting, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. It's Earth Day. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Present.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Mr. Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a work session tonight. Looks like Jason's first, no. The first item is to talk about the Blue Earth Plaza water feature. This is update.
Mayor, did you guys want to take a vote to allow public comment on these items?
Sure.
Yeah, I will move that we allow public comment on our agenda items.
Second.
Move in second. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Adam Jack.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Aaron Stewart, Parks Direct Director, here to talk about the Blue Earth Plaza update. And one of the primary things we'll kind of focus on is the water feature. This was originally designed as a water feature, and what I mean by that, it was not designed as a pool or a splash pad. However, it is being used as that. It does have a depth of about eighteen inches of water. It's about twenty-one, twenty-two inches of depth if you include the drop-off when it was dry. So, pretty good ledge in there when we don't have water in there. It does have a flat spray area that does mimic what a typical splash pad would look at, look like. At the south end of the feature, and as it says, is the bottom bullet point, we have allowed kind of waiting and splashing in that river ever since it kind of came about. So, this is, you can actively see a bunch of kids in that river up to their neck and playing alongside. And then the splash part at the south end is in the right picture there. So, it's no secret, we've had several maintenance issues over the past few years that have actually delayed our ability to open on time. Everything from, we actually found somebody that could do plastic welding, which I didn't even know was a thing until I came here. But we've had some issues with the sanitation system that we've had to upgrade based on how people use it versus how it was originally intended. We had to do the river bottom last year, which is what delayed the opening because the glass pebbles were coming off. We needed to do a different surface on it. The leapers have been inoperable. The stepping stones tend to be pretty dangerous and slick, whether it's dry or whether it's wet. And there's been a pretty good deterioration of the pebble ledge that you can see right here. Couple of years ago, we had some risk assessment done on this. Part of their highlights of what they found was the unintended use of it, meaning again, it was never designed to be used as a pool or a splash pad, however, we were using it as such. It is an open body of water with no barriers, which means, and there's no guarded water there, so there is an inherent risk of drowning. And again, we allowed public access, which means we kind of invite them in once we've done that. And there's several slips and fall hazards within that facility, whether there's water in it or not. And they basically Midwest Public Risk came back and with the unintended use and provided access, it's a significant drowning hazard. There are exposed bolts that you can see in this picture that are a puncture hazard. And these stones, you can kind of see that gap in the ledge. Really make it slick and you can catch, trip, or even catch your foot in there and twist. So, pretty significant danger. And this, the way this is set up, you would think that this is kind of a crossing as an intent to walk across. So, they literally call it stepping stones. So, you're inviting people across, but those gaps make it a pretty significant hazard. Their recommendation was to either cover it or decrease the depth for splash pad use. They gave us a year to kind of figure this out because we were already in a planning stage for a reinvestment down here because of some of the issues that we were having. So, some of the options we explored were a permanent barrier, and we have an interim solution, and then a permanent solution. This barrier, and this is out of the plaza in Kansas City.
Aaron, quick question.
Yep.
Midwest Public Risk, is that our insurer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So, this is in the plaza, and it could be as simple as putting up a barrier and no longer allowing public access. Obviously, this is not a very secure barrier. You could cross that pretty easily. So, the risk is still there to some degree, even though we're now closing it off. We would prefer to kind of lean into how people are using it and make it a usable facility that's safe. So, we wanted to align the facility with what is now the expected use, which means we would remove the identified hazards by infilling the stream with a paver system, and this is the interim solution. Remove the boulders and stepping stones, replace the jets with illuminated directional jets, refinish.
Sorry, Aaron, what's the difference between?
Those are a solid stream, and we actually have a lot of trouble with those in the wind, and they haven't been operable. The illuminated directional jets will kind of just shoot out, and they're much more stable and simplified rather than the laminar jets. So, they're, it's a simplest, more simple process to get that to work, so less moving parts. Refinish trench grates, jet lids, and a stream border. And so, this is kind of a mock-up of the site plan. We would take those pavers, which are two-by-two, so twenty-four inches square, and lay them in the existing stream, remove the stepping stones, add those directional jets off to the side to lay on top of that to create that stream and a splash area for. So, here's kind of the concept mock-up of what that would look like. This paver system, you can kind of see the setup over here. We would still be running the water through the bottom of it, even though you wouldn't have access to it. So, there's a lot of minimal change in how we filter this water for the interim solution. And so, the other thing we are checking into that they're looking at is if there was a grid system that we could use rather than these adjustable columns, because it's just more secure if you can put it in a grid that you'd attach to the side. The water would go in between the grates, but the width of that is pretty small, so it allowed to pass through. But it would be pretty difficult to get feet or fingers through those. The slits would be pretty small. So, this is kind of a, just a side-by-side of what it would look before, and then the concept on the right of how we would look afterwards. The grates we're talking about, you can see that we actually fabricated one to fix in here. That's why it's a different color. So, we, most of these have deteriorated to the point where they're going to need replacement. So, we figured while we're doing this, we might as well just go ahead and replace those. The estimated cost is $278,000. The timeline we're looking at, we'd like to go to construction documents this month. We'll get the bid solicitation out by May, hopefully have a contract in front of you to approve by June, and then start construction in July, and it would be done by the fall. The funding plan for this is the South End TDD, which has a current balance of $535,000.
What's a TDD?
I'm gonna let Jason take that one. Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Why don't you repeat that for the audience?
TDD is the Transportation Development District. It's a half-cent sales tax. It's been in existence on the south end. I'd have to look for sure, but I think around 2010 it went into place. I think they're active through 2032.
Okay, thank you.
Are there restrictions on use of that fund, Jason? Could you just highlight those?
There are. Every Transportation Development District we have in the community has a plan for the south end. It highlights every piece of public infrastructure we have on the south end. Parking garage, Third Street, Fourth Street, the Blue Earth Plaza, the parking lots that surround all the hotels and the Discovery Center.
Okay, are there questions?
So, the idea with the interim solution is we would like to get five to seven years out of it. It could be more, but we're not necessarily trying to extend that beyond its useful life. We want to look at a permanent solution. So, again, we'll renovate that towards a splash pad. The new features that we're going to kind of go through in these slides are floating granite ball, the directional jets, the circle of boulders in the middle with short and tall bubblers, funnel sprays, a shallow stream, and the illuminated bubblers replacement that are at the end. Plasma pavement replacement, concrete terrace seating, and treatment system upgrades to handle it, cycle it faster and better. And so, this is kind of the site plan, replacing the floating ball up here. The water would actually flow out of this two ways. So, it would flow from the middle this way, and then this way. And again, we would maintain that kind of in splash pad area that we have, but you can see the funnel sprays. We've got the seating over here, the boulders in the middle. And part of this is the intent is try to mimic the original kind of stream design. That was a piece of this Blue Earth Plaza. So, we want to represent that, but actually make it a playable surface with small depth in that stream. So, it would be an inch or less.
So, we can have a water feature with boulders that, would it be like a climbing structure? Okay, that's not that high, but still seems, I don't know.
It's more of a sitting.
Okay.
Area.
But kids are going to climb on it.
Yes, it would be textured in a way that it would have good grip.
Okay.
It would be something we would have to watch and maintain.
Okay.
And again, this is a concept.
Sure.
We would want to fully vet something out.
Yeah.
But the idea is trying to maintain that semblance of a river. But, you know, in a safe way to play. So, this is the concept rendering that you can kind of see that boulder, the seating off to the side, and we'll just kind of go through these things one by one. So, a floating granite ball. Ironically, that only takes five gallons a minute to push that ball up and have it floating, just as an interesting fact.
Any, how much distance is between the ball and the rim?
Right here, not much. You can see how it kind of settles in that.
Is it a child's finger width, or is that something to be concerned about?
I would not necessarily be concerned about that, especially from the distance from the edge to the ball here when you're talking about a small child. But that's a question we would probably need to ask. Here are the directional jets, so you can see the laminar jets have that solid stream. If you think about it, you can see these directional jets, they're broken up, and they're, again, they're a little more maintenance friendly. Shallow stream following down here. Here's a good look of the boulders and bubblers in another location. They even have some of that terrace kind of seating up there. So, that's a better image of what that would really look like. And again, these fountains here. These already exist, but we would upgrade those and put new ones in. And of course, this is the concept, just calling out that terrace seating and the upgrades. So, again, the idea behind here is to reimagine that original design with the intent to have a playable splash pad that people would use. Right now, the estimated current cost of that concept would be about $1.3 million. We would try to look at that 2030, 2032 mark for the capital improvement plan as that interim solution should last that five to seven years. Again, this is aligned and accounted for in the Moving HK Comprehensive Plan. Planned upgrades for Blue Earth Plaza are listed out in that plan. So, the other part we're going to talk about that we haven't really done a whole, go ahead.
Sorry, going back, Aaron, on the plan, like going way back, I should have asked this one earlier. On what you're hoping to get done this summer, if we don't do that, what does that mean for that area?
We would have to probably secure it to where people can't access it. We would not fill it with water. I do believe, and Casey can confirm this, but we can operate the south end sprays separate from the stream. So, we would do that.
Okay.
But we would need to put up a barrier that people wouldn't be able to access, and it would be kind of a fall hazard. Obviously, we wouldn't want to try to do that in the most tasteful way. But that would be what we would do if we didn't move ahead.
Okay, thank you.
So, we talked a lot about water, but looking ahead at some other future projects. The park area, the grass area that we use for a lot of rentals is becoming increasingly popular. 2022, we had eighty rental days or thirteen individual rentals. Twenty-three, ninety rental days, and twenty-four, ninety-one. And when you think about that, most of the time, that's just over weekends, so it's a single day or a two-day event. So, that's a significant amount of weeks that there's something out there. Obviously, our longest rental that most people know is the Festival of Lights that sits out there probably for about two months and maybe even longer weather dependent, so, which the past couple of years have had some delays getting it off because of weather. So, we have natural turf out there. There's a pretty significant impact every year. There's more items wanting to be brought on there. We frequently get damaged. And in fact, this year, it was so bad, we headed to do a $16,000 re-sodding project, and we did that in January. Our first event is the first of May, so if you get a chance to drive by it, it looks as good as it ever has with the new turf in, but that will quickly deteriorate as we start to let people on it. So, it also, with natural turf, that does kind of limit the space of what we can and can't put on there. So, here's just some pictures, and I don't want to, I'm not putting any kind of onus on any particular event. It is truly event after event that costs. So, I just picked three to show you three different ones to illustrate that it's not a particular event, but it does happen, and some are worse than others. But you can see where grass is dying out, where they've put structures on, and this is kind of midsummer where you can see it start to yellow and go dormant, where it takes quite a bit to recover heavy walking areas. So, same thing, you can really see it there. We advise people not to do this, but obviously, it happens frequently when they've added restrooms, and they'll put it in the grass. And then, of course, that creates a path and a wear spot, like that smaller wear spot. We ask people not to drive on it, and we do try to manage this. So, make no mistake that we have a role in managing how people do this. But you can see where they'll drive onto the surface and create ruts, which ultimately damages it. This winter was a really hard one for us, and you'll see that. This, you can see where people walk through that little present and the wear path that makes. This is the part that's covered by that item, and you can just see how green and lush that is versus the other parts where people were walking and standing around. And there's some tire tracks that you'll get a better look at here. So, obviously, this is why we had to do the re-sodding. Here's where the Christmas tree sits, so I think this really does illustrate it. This is where they put the lighting boxes. And here's your circumference of the tree, so you can see the difference between what was covered and what wasn't. So, one of the things that we were thinking about, and we haven't explored this, so it's just an idea that if you'd like to offer some feedback, we'd be open to listening. Looking at potentially artificial turf for that area. It gives us a more durable service. You can put a different kind of subsurface below it that allows for more uses. It doesn't mean it's unlimited use, but, because you can still damage that, but it would be an opportunity to increase the types of uses. We could also redesign that space for new programming and event opportunities, like creating a food truck pad. So, we don't take up any parking for that, and it just makes it a little easier, especially if you have a smaller festival. And so, ideally, it could handle that heavier equipment. So, here are just a couple of examples of areas that have turf. I just yanked them off the internet. But you can see people lining up, kind of what that stage could look like. And it is typically a pretty inviting environment. This one is in Wichita. They have a lot of performances there. They're constantly moving items in and out, so. Questions, comments?
Aaron, you said there might be some limitations if you were to use artificial turf. What would that be?
Well, I just, I don't want to give the impression that we can just drag cranes on there, and it's not going to do any damage. You can, you can upgrade the subsurface to handle things like stages because that's not the same type of turf as a sports turf. So, it doesn't have to have, it doesn't have to be as soft. So, you can bolster that up to where you can get things on and off there. There's also, there's also items out there that allow you to drive machinery on and off or put stages on and off without, you're not actually setting it on the turf. You set it on the, like a padding system or a grading system, and it protects the turf. But that turf handles it because it's not a living item. It handles it a lot better.
How's the drainage on those, thinking specifically for when people bring their dogs around there?
So, ideally, we would have some grass area still over to the north end that we would encourage animals to use. We would ask that they clean up after their dog, and ideally, we're probably cleaning that turf with some sort of spray before we set an event on it, so. Yeah, generally speaking, we would not want dogs using that particular space for their restroom needs.
Yeah. And so, we've got, I mean, what, we've got a pretty, I'm sure, the pretty extensive irrigation system in there already. So, this would not be just as simple as putting turf over the grass, right? Like, can you kind of?
You wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't do that anyways.
Yeah.
With turf, you would put a drainage system in.
Right. So, can you kind of talk more about the logistics of that and cost as well?
I have no idea what the cost is.
Okay.
Because this is really just in its earliest phase of, you know, obviously, we would need to do, our biggest priority here is to remove the hazard for the water feature. Looking forward, when we start to plan out capital needs, there could be, the real question here is, is turf at this point an alternative worth exploring, artificial turf? What it would require in the most general sense is you would need a drainage system, you would need a subsurface, so you'd pull all of that out. There's an extensive electrical system in there that we could improve upon and increase that's used for the Festival of Lights. But also, it gives us an opportunity, are we building an area for a stage? Are we building areas for food trucks? So, it's more about we could redesign that area, how it's being used for events to make it more conducive for events, but less maintenance, less wear and tear. And that's where the artificial comes in, and it's going to hold up a little bit better, so.
Yeah, I've been to that, been to that spot down in Wichita. It's actually really nice.
NAF, I can't say it, NAF. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to butcher the name.
Yeah, it is pretty.
But it's downtown Wichita.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's interesting kind of just to see, we've had that plaza for ten years or more now, and just to see the kind of uses that have come up were probably different than how it was designed, but.
Aaron, I'm assuming that current green space has to, can't be paved from a storm or from water retention, does that make sense, drainage? It has to remain some, I mean, the use of it, it would make sense to me that that, we continue the Blue Earth Plaza paving across just based on the different events, but I'm assuming there's a reason we would have to have it be grass or turf or no.
Versus like concrete?
I was thinking like the paver system that's the Blue Earth, what Blue Earth Plaza is and continuing that across.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest from an attractive standpoint, you would want either natural or artificial turf in there. People are looking at versus that paver system, if I'm understanding.
No, and I understand that. I mean, you could make pavers look attractive and do something different. My question was from a drainage standpoint, do we, can we not have that be a paved surface?
I mean, you'd have to handle the water. That's a.
That's what I, I was just asking if that was off the table, what, a drainage study?
Yeah, it would have to be analyzed, just like any other project that's going to take surface like grass and convert it to something else.
Yeah.
When we looked at the south end, and we just addressed this recently, because there's a recent permit that's being pursued to add some additional hotel rooms down there. It's grass surface today. But when we went back to look at the original PUD and how, what we were building compared to what was there, there was a net gain in area that could drain into these grassy areas. So, we would have to go back and look. Obviously, being our park is something we could work internally with our professionals on.
I mean, I agree from an attractive standpoint that the grass is desirable when I'm comparing that to, turf doesn't have the same appeal all the time for some of that use, but could be more functional for these events with less wear and tear, I think, if it wasn't grass.
We could probably look at a combination too of some hard surfaces and some grass surfaces, you know, just to kind of extend. I mean.
That's, I mean, that's where I was going, Karen.
So, the nice thing about the artificial is you can put a, the drainage system you put underneath, you could put in both detention and retention abilities, so it mimics the drain rates of grass. And now, we're getting way out of my expertise here, so the guys behind me know about that. Obviously, we would study that. I do think there are areas that we would kind of concrete, like I'm, I'm just thinking about a pad for food trucks so they can drive in and drive out, and they don't have to worry about getting on grass. And you could have the electrical hookups there. So, even though it's artificial, I do think people are attracted to that green space. I mean, we, you know, obviously, would take the direction, explore maybe some harder surfaces if that was the desire.
Well, I just, I just love the water feature that we've got, but I'm at the Discovery Center a lot, you know, I was on the board, and so, it always kind of, I'm always going, ooh, when I see these kids jumping, you know, from concrete into, and, I mean, I think it, I think we need a water feature definitely because that's sort of part of the flint hills, the wind and the water and the, but I can quite frankly see the liability kind of yelling at us. And, but, you know, a splash park, kids love that, and particularly one of those ones where you can step on one thing and make another thing go higher. So, I was sort of involved with the architects when we built the whole, you know, and I know what their vision was. And I really love that vision, but on the other hand, I can see the safety question, and I don't, I don't think we've had any major accidents there, but.
That we're aware of.
Yeah, but I'm sure we've skinned a few knees and.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard of some slips, trips, and falls, especially on those stepping stones.
Yeah. Well, kids are going to climb on it if it's there. I mean, duh.
Certainly.
But I love the way it kind of, you know, so I certainly support your idea of trying to make it safer, and I'm sad, but go for it.
Yeah, I'm good with the plan, the interim plan, even the long-term plan. I just think with the turf, I think it's the right idea, but it'll all come down to what does it look like and how does it feel in the end?
Yeah, I would much rather us have some form of mitigation for the risks this year and still have some kind of water feature instead of having it completely shut down. So, we've got the funds to do it in that, in that fund, so I'm okay with that.
Aaron, could you go back to the dates that the work would be done?
Estimated timeline.
Estimated dates?
Yeah, so this is our best anticipated.
So, construction in July, are we looking at it possibly being, is?
We anticipate, like, yeah, three weeks a month. Now, they may come back in that agreement and say something like six weeks, because obviously, weather, they got to build in weather days and things like that. But in talking with at least the architect, we're expecting kind of three to four weeks once construction starts. So, we would have, hopefully have a ribbon cutting and an opening sometime in the fall. And, well, I mean, July, August is the fall. Football starts in August. That's the fall to me.
But one of the things that's nice about that particular park is it is water that is open and available through the warmth of August and September when the other pools have already closed. So, I would hope that we would still be able to capture a little bit of that season this year.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's always weather dependent with freeze, freeze and thaw. But I would anticipate we could run it, you know, obviously, at least through September, we're pretty warm. Most of the time, we can run it through a lot of October too, so.
Okay.
Aaron, and not being open this summer, or if we don't go forward with this, is that because it's functionally not working or because we're worried about the risk?
The risk.
And that's our decision, or that's an insurance decision, that's?
I mean, we could, insurance has recommended that we either fill it in or barrier it off. So, I really wouldn't see the point of filling it in if we're going to barrier or filling it with water to be, people are going to get in it, and they're going to cross the barrier, so that liability is there. So, I would say we would barrier it off, and that is directly related back to what Public Risk has told us. So I would say we would barrier it off, and that is directly related back to what public risk has told us, based on their recommendations.
Okay, I mean, this isn't a new risk for me, this is something that's, I mean, how long has it been there? When did we put it in? I've lost track of time.
Ten years?
No.
Maybe a little more?
Long, I have a thirteen-year-old, and I feel like he went to it when he was.
The Discovery Center's thirteen years old.
Little.
That was, yeah.
I, I mean, that's not a new risk, so I think this is, I may have felt different if this came a little earlier to us, knowing that we could have something going this summer, so I think timing's not on our side. Use of TDD funds, I mean, I guess if that's the recommendation for best use of those funds, but I'm just not as familiar with what that account and, and the use of those. I think overall, making that space more enjoyable, better use, that part I'm, I'm supportive of. And, and do like that longer-term vision that we have for it, just struggling a little bit with this concept, and, and it feels quick not having that used during the summer, and a, a good chunk of money that we've heard. Could, I, I just don't know enough about TDT, TDD to know other uses and, and stuff, but would trust if you guys are saying that's the best use of those funds.
I mean, in my opinion, it is, because it makes something that we shouldn't be operating operable, and it leans into how people are using it, so. As, for me, it is, but I'm sure there's others that have their own opinions.
Yeah, if, if the choice is, you get a shortened use of the facility this summer, or you get no use of the facility for perpetuity.
Well, for this summer, for sure.
Yeah.
Doing it in the fall would not, you know.
Yeah.
Is there any public comment on this issue? Do I have consensus then to go ahead and do an RFP and pursue this?
Yes.
Okay, Danielle, you've heard the, the group? Okay, the second item is stormwater program update, and who's?
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, oh, I just wanted to say, Erin walks back, we planted three trees today in city park, Erin was there to help, and the, the retired teachers, KNEA or something, anyway, they're sort of, they're sort of supporting this thing. And so there were a lot of people, and they had high school students there, so, and the one that, that I helped plant, I let the high school students do it, but, is a maple that's going to be absolutely gorgeous by the rose garden, so go check it out. Thank you, Erin, for being there. Wyatt.
Good evening, Commissioners, Wyatt Thompson, interim director of Public Works. Here to present a stormwater program update for you, and with me this evening, I have Brian Johnson, city engineer, Bill Heatherman, our compliance stormwater, or stormwater compliance engineer, Dan Tyson, our operations superintendent, who, among other things, main, helps maintain our stormwater infrastructure, and Sean Linnenberger, our stormwater officer, who's part of the engineering team along with Bill. So if, if there are questions for, you know, that, or you want to dive into deeper discussion on any of these topics tonight, I've got a whole group of folks that are willing to step up here and, and have that conversation with you. Just want to start off by saying Happy Earth Day. It, this, we thought, thought it was fitting to address stormwater on this fifty-fifth anniversary of Earth Day, because it does have connections back to water quality issues, which is a, a major part of our stormwater program. And so, you know, the Earth Day in nineteen seventy, and then that led directly to the Clean Water Act updates in nineteen seventy-two, which still govern a lot of our approaches to stormwater and water quality today, in terms of the regulations that we follow. So tonight, I want to focus on kind of our four stormwater buckets, that aspects of our program, and then we'll talk about our near and our midterm priorities, and then have some discussion. Certainly feel free to jump in with questions as we talk about each of the buckets. So those buckets are our neighborhood drainage systems, our detention systems, our water quality improvements and standards, and the way we manage our floodplains. And our goal tonight is really to educate you on kind of what we're doing, how that's going, kind of the feedback that we're hearing from various parts of the community, and then what we intend to work on or change as we move forward with those different programs. So to start it off, we'll talk about our stormwater, our neighborhood drainage systems, and if you spend any time at all thinking about stormwater, which you may or may not do, if you do, you're probably thinking about these neighborhood stormwater systems. These are the system of inlets and pipes and gutters and swales or ditches that are used to collect and convey stormwater away from homes into rivers or nearby water bodies. And so, you know, these are typically located in the right-of-way or in drainage easements. They are typically a city responsibility to maintain, there's certainly private infrastructure that looks very similar to this on individual sites. But if we're talking about infrastructure that's in the, along the curb, or in drainage easements in people's backyards, a lot of times, that, that is public infrastructure that we're maintaining. So what we are, what we're doing, we, in twenty twenty-three, we adopted updated stormwater management criteria, and that was really an update from standards that have been in place since nineteen ninety-five. And so it was, it was just a modernization of some of those standards, their, their criteria for the design and analysis of our stormwater management systems and our infrastructure, and those standards includes things like, you know, the drainage impact study, and the submission requirements for that, drainage easements, hydrology, our conveyance systems, which are those pipes or swales or, or gutters, our collection system, which is the inlets or area drains where the water gets into that system, our detention requirements, and our post-construction best management practices, which get into that water quality aspect. And then there's a whole bunch of technical resources in the back of that document that describe kind of how to design, so help designers, planners, builders kind of meet those, those standards and requirements and implement that stormwater management criteria, or stormwater management infrastructure properly, so that it lasts and is effective to meet the goals of the, that we have. There are, drainage impact study is really the drainage strategy for a site, and so we, we ask that developers or, or consultants prepare that early in the process in order to make sure we're all on the same page, in terms of what requirements are needed to be met, whether, you know, what calculations they're supposed to use to size their, their infrastructure, how detention is supposed to be managed, where the water is supposed to go, before they get real far too deep into the design process, we want to make sure that there's an overall strategy to how that infrastructure is going to be implemented. So we typically see that, or like to see that at the preliminary plat stage, or prior to the building permit stage of a, of a project, just to iron out all of those details. Drainage is obviously a very critical part of that building, of that permit review and that development review process, and, so we like to work alongside our development community, consultants, contractors, to help them understand the requirements and help find the, the most cost-effective solutions that we can. Ultimately, those systems that are designed and built through various methods become the ownership and maintenance, maintenance by the city, and so we have a vested interest in making sure that those systems are functional and effective. And then, you know, in order to do that, we have a staff of three on our engineering team that are involved in that design and permit review. We have six folks that are in our maintenance, stormwater maintenance team, as well as three equipment operators that operate our street sweepers to keep dirt and debris out of the system, and then the six crew members work to maintain, repair, clean the, the system to keep it operating effectively. Community education is another major part of our neighborhood drainage system bucket. We host ten to thirteen events throughout the year to target different, different groups, different audiences, whether that be the general public, you know, we may be at a, a community event at the mall, or we may be partnered with Sunset Zoo at some of their Water Matters Days, or their Earth Day celebrations. We may be hosting luncheon learns for developers and builders to kind of learn about erosion control measures or, or stormwater system design, just a variety of opportunities for, to engage with different aspects of the public, and make sure that they're, they're educated alongside of us in these processes. So how, how is, how is it going? Our, overall, we think that, that this aspect of the, of our stormwater system is going pretty well. We think that the systems generally work as designed, we're certainly open to feedback as to how we could improve those areas. We're not hearing about major issues from the development community with this aspect of our infrastructure. I think everybody is fairly familiar with the fact that we need to take the stormwater somewhere, and these are fairly standard and reasonable measures by which to move that stormwater around and, and get it to where we ultimately need it to go. Some of the older parts of town certainly have challenges, where there was infrastructure that was put in place prior to any current standards, that infrastructure may be undersized, there may not be as many inlets as we would require, the pipes may be smaller, and so, you know, you see, end up seeing young people kayaking through the neighborhoods east of, of campus, where, where that infrastructure simply doesn't exist today. There's certainly areas along stream banks where homeowners have had to deal with erosion issues, as those natural streams have moved over time and cut into that bank, potentially putting some of their, their homes or their sheds or their decks at, at risk. Certainly today, we have, we have broader setback requirements away from streams, we have different mitigation measure, measures that we could put into place, you know, during the initial development, to try to protect and armor those stream, those stream banks, to prevent that from happening in the future, but certainly in, in developments where those standards didn't exist, you know, those, those, some of those homeowners are potentially at risk and have experienced issues that we've had to, to try to help them with. There are, you know, certainly localized flooding and erosion concerns, and our stormwater crew does do house calls to go meet with homeowners on their property or, or business owners on their property to kind of understand what the issues are. A lot of times, those issues can be resolved kind of on the site by the property owner themselves. Maybe it's a, a minor grading issue that they can do, you know, to shed the water away from their, their foundation. Maybe it's clogged gutters or undersized gutters, or gutters that, you know, aren't routing the, the rainwater properly. Sometimes it's a lot of education about how, you know, the stormwater system is actually designed to overflow in certain types of storms and cross a portion of your property. And so that portion of your property, which is probably in a drainage easement, isn't a good place to build your shed, or isn't a good place to plant your vegetable garden, right? So there's some education that can happen to help them understand how the natural systems or the design systems work, and then how they can then accommodate their use of their property to best fit with those systems. Some of those house calls result in evidence or, or awareness that something's not working right. It's not working like it was intended, because something changed between construction and today, or because something's broken in the system that we weren't aware of, and so, you know, we may have some sort of public project that does generate from these house call visits, where we need to go out and repair something or address something that's come up that we simply weren't aware of. So we think that that, that interaction is, is, is very positive overall, and, and ultimately leads to better outcomes for those property owners. Lots of coordination also happens with developers and builders during the design process, obviously during plan review, also during the construction process as homes and, as public infrastructure's built, and then ultimately as homes or buildings are built on those sites. Some of the issues that we've seen are with just kind of education around the importance of grading plans and planning out where that water is going to go, and how they're going to shape the earth to get it to go where they want it to go. Some issues that we've seen are at the interface between two different subdivisions, where there may be two different designers or two different developers, and just how those lines all come together at those intersections sometimes can be complex, and so we try to work through those interfaces as best we can. There's also sometimes conflicts in, in how a designer and an engineer thought that the grading would happen on a site, and how the builder ultimately builds the home and grades the, the property to get the water to get away from the home that they built. They don't always match up, so sometimes, you know, the designer may think the water's going to end up over here, when actually it's going the opposite direction, or, or, you know, something to that effect. And so just trying to educate both the designers and the, and the builders and how that coordination needs to occur. We do now require some additional grading plans and grading intent to be described in drawings, so that there's at least a record that can be passed along to future builders or future homeowners about what the intent was at the time, and then how that's ultimately implemented on the site. So what we're, what we're working on for our neighborhood drainage systems, we want to continue to implement those current standards, keep an open dialogue with all parties to understand, you know, the, the state of what's being built, how it's being built, what those best standards are, and then, of course, we want to maintain that infrastructure. We have, have an intent to amend the stormwater management criteria to clarify some of the standards, as well as simplify the DIS requirements. There, we've had the standards in place for about eighteen months now, we've got, taken a lot of good feedback from folks that use that manual, and, and we've taken notes throughout those conversations to understand kind of where those pain points are, what, what standard questions keep coming up, and so we have some, some minor amendments to address some of those issues. In terms of simplifying the DIS requirements, it's a critical piece, so we don't want to take it away, or, or lessen the importance of it, but we do want to try to clarify kind of what is needed at the DIS stage and when, and how much design do the consultants need to do to get to that point? You know, we're, we're aware that today, there, there may be times where consultants have had to go much deeper into the design of those systems at an early stage than they think is reasonable, and we understand that perspective. So trying to under, trying to, to clarify our intent and requirements of what do we need with the drainage impact study? When do we need it, putting the stamp on that, and then addressing the other more technical issues later as they get further into that design process. So we think those are steps that can help to address some of the concerns that we've heard with those standards. Later this summer, we'll be working with community development to update the Manhattan Development Code, and as part of a broader overview of that document, and we would want to partner with them to make sure that the stormwater management criteria is consistent with what is written about stormwater in the MDC, as well as what is written about stormwater in our ordinances. So those three documents need to align in all aspects, and so we want to make sure that we get that consistency. We also want to streamline our design submission requirements through OPAL. You approved that permitting and licensing software a few weeks ago, and so as we move toward implementation of that software, we'll be able to build in those drainage impact study requirements, those plan review requirements and expectations for stormwater into that system, so that it's very clear to a developer or a builder submitting for an application for a new development, a new subdivision, a new building permit, you know, what do they need to submit from a stormwater perspective, and not have those permits kind of missing us as, as things pass. And then we want to continue that public outreach and education with, with HOAs, with neighborhoods, consultants, developers, all those opportunities that we have to, to kind of share the message and, and take feedback as well from how stormwater's working.
Wyatt, would you explain what OPAL is for the people at home who may not have, you know, just basically, it's something we're adopting and?
Yeah, OPAL is Oracle permitting and licensing software. It's a new software that we'll be implementing to streamline our development review, permit review, licensing application process. So it'll really be kind of a one-stop place for people who need to interact with the city for those different services. We'll be able to build out workflows, and so if you need to, if you're a developer and you're starting a new subdivision, you can log in with your account to OPAL and interact with city staff and kind of view the steps that you'll have to go through to get your project off the ground.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, good question, thank you for that. Other questions about our neighborhood drainage systems at this point? All right, our second stormwater bucket is the detention bucket.
Wyatt, before you go too far, can you just clarify, I think I understand the difference between detention and retention, but before you go into this, can you just define what the differences are?
Absolutely. Broad, so retention is a wet pond, it's retaining water, it's, and it's, and it's wet. Detention is just holding back water, but then it's allowing that water to exit. So think of a dry, it's called a dry pond, I mean, it gets, it fills up with water during a rain event, it's held for, for a period of time, and then it's released out through the outlet structure. And so then, on a dry day, the second picture there is a detention pond, the picture on the left is a retention pond. And then the, the other pieces there, the underground storage. And then the the other pieces there, the underground storage um is in that third picture. Uh those are all methods of detention in terms of how we would categorize it. It's it's intended to uh temporarily store stormwater and then release it back out at a controlled rate into that downstream system. So they can be wet, they can be dry, they can be underground. Um it's just a matter of how, it's a matter, it's just a way to capture that water, hold it for a period of time, and then release it back. Um the outlet structure, which is an example in that right-hand picture, um there's always a way for the water to leave the system, either in a low flow or an overflow type of an event. And so that lets that water out at that controlled rate, and there's all kinds of standards in our uh uh in the S M C that our management, our stormwater management criteria that defines how to design those systems, how to design the overflows with, how to, how to size all that infrastructure properly.
And then the third one is that, um would that, isn't there something built under the parking lot at Genesis that retains water or helps cha- so is that something like?
That's, yes, that's an example of an of an underground storage solution. They come in, there are different methods of doing that, but essentially there are cavities or pipes or or uh volumes underneath, typically under parking lots um that allow that water to to go into that system, be stored for a period of time. And then just as with a a dry pond, it it outlets at a certain point uh at a certain rate. So the the benefits, obviously, you know, there's there's flood control uh benefits. If you can slow that water down, if you can detain it and keep it back, you don't have to deal with all of the water at the same time at that downstream. And so we we capture that water, hold it, release it slowly over time. Uh it helps, helps manage that flood control risk downstream. Um there's scenarios where you can then, based on the detention strategy, potentially reduce the size of certain pipes or infrastructure in that downstream because now you've metered it out in a way that you don't have to have a pipe this big to carry the water, you can have a pipe this big to carry the water um because of the way you've managed the timing of the water uh reaching that point in the system. Um there's always an overflow structure in these, and so sometimes that's a pipe, sometimes that's a um an over, a spot in low point in the area, whereas the basin fills up, the water will will exit that direction. And that has to be designed as well so that it, again, it doesn't go the wrong way and flood somebody. It goes the way we intend the water to go um and reach that downstream channel. Uh these are detention uh are generally located in drainage easements and dedicated uh with restrictive covenants uh for private maintenance. Um or they're located on public ground and they're then dealt, maintained by the city. Uh so what, what are we doing with detention? Uh detention is required for all development sites that are point four acres and larger when there is an increase in the total impervious area. So if you have a green field and you're building a subdivision, um you're gonna need to find a way to detain that water. If you have a redevelopment site that's half an acre, you have some in existing parking lot on it, but you want to add a building or or grow your parking lot, uh you may need to have detention for that as well. The size of that basin is relative to the calculations in the S M C and how much of new impervious area uh you're generating. And so there's, there's standards in that S M C that define kind of how that process works and how much detention is required. And then the way that that gets accomplished is is up to, you know, that individual project. We do have uh fee and lieu options in a couple of our watersheds. And so this is an option that's available for projects in the downtown east and west watershed, which is really the areas east and south of campus. Um developers pay a fee and then instead of building their detention on their site. Um and then the city uses, collects that fee and uses that to build a different project somewhere else in that watershed that would benefit uh the overall area. Um and so we're using that as one of the funding sources to fund projects that are identified in the downtown uh stormwater master plan, which is a large network of pipes that are moving water through the community out to Wildcat Creek um or the Blue River to, and so the those options are available. We have had a few developers take advantage of those uh options in that watershed where it's available. Uh the city maintains a a handful of basins through the city. The majority of those basins are privately maintained, um a hundred and seven uh basins uh and seventeen underground systems uh currently in the city. Uh we think that the public sees um value in the, in having detention. Um there's, you know, detention is a, is is pretty common in the Midwest, and so we, as a way to manage stormwater. And so we think there's generally a good understanding of about the concept. Um there's a a large body of knowledge and different ways to meet that requirement. We do get a lot of questions um and maybe some uh misunderstandings of of the level of protection provided by any single detention basin. Um you know, the idea is that if if I have a detention basin and I know where it is, you know, why I shouldn't ever flood. And depending on the volume of water and how the water gets there, you know, there's still potential risk to flood even with detention systems in place. It certainly lessens that risk, so it's not a panacea. Uh but but kind of understanding how they are intended to function and at what level of protection they're providing is some of the the questions we try to address. And then certainly there's, there are maintenance responsibilities and requirements with these basins, and that is something that is commonly not as well understood. Uh that there is an obligation on the private side to maintain uh this aspect of our infrastructure. Um on the development, from the development community, uh they're generally knowledgeable of about the requirement to build detention and then how that translates to each site or each project can be a little trickier. You know, there's different watersheds, there's different uh site terrain that they have to deal with, the same requirements, but how those get applied to their specific sites can sometimes be a point of conversation. You know, I guess where we would like to get to is, you know, detention as a system that's planned and integrated with development um versus kind of a one-off spotty approach, we think could address some of the concerns. Um you know, developers certainly have a cost in mind, that that these basins require space. Uh there's concerns about how they look, especially if they're not maintained, there's concerns about that future maintenance that they have to pass on to an H O A or a homeowner. Um there's only two options where where developers have an alternative to building detention on their site. And so there's, we've received requests or or questions about, you know, uh additional fee and lieu options or alternatives that could be developed. Uh and then of course, the maintenance aspect, uh it's mostly a private duty, uh which is, you know, fairly common amongst amongst cities in the Midwest is to have uh HOAs or homeowners maintain those basins, but obviously that creates um challenges with enforcement, with uh with education, um with how, how do we really go and go about uh requiring folks that may not understand these systems or how they work, uh you know, obligating them to to maintain them. So there is, there is some challenges there that that we have to deal with. Uh we're working on two major things related to uh detention. Uh the first is finalizing our tributary stream and detention basin maintenance policies study. This was work that we started in twenty twenty-three. I think we gave an update to the commission and on this in last, in August uh when we were here previously. Really, the the purpose of that study was to provide recommendations for the city's maintenance policies for public and private storm channel, s- stream channels and detention basins. Uh we looked at eighteen peer cities and how they handle maintenance and and practices in these areas. We evaluated existing conditions in two of our watersheds in the western side of the community, came up with a number of case studies to evaluate kind of the specific examples of issues that were common and that that try to develop solutions for those. Uh we've reviewed our current maintenance policies and practices and then developed a gap analysis to try to understand where we have policies that aren't, that aren't actionable um in terms of how we maintain and respond to those various issues that come up. So we do, we are at the stage where we need to finalize those recommendations. Uh one aspect of those that we point out here and on this slide is to develop a plan for inspection of all of the privately maintained basins in the city. Potentially complete major repairs that are needed as at those uh basins to kind of g- bring them back up to a certain baseline level of functionality. And then as a part of that, re-educate homeowners, re-educate H O A members about their responsibilities to maintain those going forward uh in some instructions and uh knowledge about what that would take. You know, what do we mean by maintaining this basin, what does that require on an annual basis or a five-year basis? And providing them the tools to work alongside us to maintain that infrastructure more effectively. We feel like that's kind of a middle ground from where we are today, where we just rely on homeowners to do it versus a, at the other end where the city takes full responsibility for all of that infrastructure. Um obviously, the first step in that is doing an inventory to understand what the condition of those um basins are through that inspection process. The second thing that we're working on uh here is that we would recommend evaluating uh potentially master planning watersheds uh for regional detention or additional fee and lieu strategies to expand those opportunities that developers have to meet these requirements. Uh we could certainly, uh would want to prioritize our nine watersheds that are, you know, within the city uh based on their potential for development or redevelopment. If a, if a wa- watershed is completely built out or mostly built out and there's not a lot of opportunity for that to turn over and become something different in the future, then maybe that's one we don't focus on with these tools. But if a, if a watershed has potential for new greenfield development or new redevelopment scenarios, new investment in infrastructure, uh identifying where regional basins could be located that could address the needs of of many property owners. Um you know, could be a way to either spur that development or create some efficiencies as redevelopment happens. It wouldn't be a spotty lot by lot or zone by zone approach, uh but that that regional basin could satisfy the requirements of the many. Uh then another thing we could consider here is uh potentially as part of conversations with the M D C update is requiring subdivision master plans for larger areas to address drainage at a larger scale. Uh the example of this would be the Grand Mir Master Plan that was developed in the early two thousands. It set forth a a comprehensive drainage strategy with certain with ponds on the golf course and Vanessa Lake that could then be used by uh all of the surrounding subdivisions to meet their detention requirements. And there's been certainly other examples of how development has met their detention requirements um as well. But as new, larger subdivisions could occur in the future, um does requiring them to take a comprehensive look at drainage uh make sense to address those long-term needs? Uh questions on the detention bucket before we move on?
Everybody okay with detention? Go ahead, Wyatt.
So our next uh stormwater bucket is the water quality bucket. Um if you think about the neighborhood infrastructure being kind of gray infrastructure, gray pipes, gray inlets, uh this, the water quality bucket is more about green infrastructure. And so they, that can take on a number of different flavors, including some gray um as well. But the m- the the goal here is management of pollutants that are generated by urbanization or development um and through natural methods or mechanical means. And so that could include things like rain gardens or bio-retention cells or infiltration basins or infiltration trenches, vegetated swales, uh conservation areas, just leaving areas untouched in the development process. Um and then some physical structures like the one that's pictured there in the second picture, a hydrodynamic separator or some other type of inserts to go into manholes. Uh the goal is to, you know, capture sediment, capture suspended solids, capture other pollutants, uh nitrogen or phosphorus that's running off from yards, run it through either vegetation uh or capture it in some other way so that it doesn't proceed downstream um and cause issues with either sedimentation of of downstream water, basins, lakes, ponds, rivers um or pass along those uh pollutants or excess fertilizers into downstream conditions. We're doing all that work um to maintain compliance with our M S four uh permit, uh which is a E P A requirement administered through K D H E. Uh we've had a, that permit um since two thousand eight was when we first received that uh that permit and had that obligation uh placed upon us. As part of that uh permitting process, we submit an annual report, uh we reapply for that permit every five years. And each time we go through that cycle, K D H E, you know, has a tendency to raise the bar as to the expectations that they require of us to meet those obligations. So it wasn't, you know, two thousand eight wasn't, you have to meet, we had to meet what was required in two thousand eight. We just resubmitted um last year, and now we have to meet the K D H E's expectations uh for twenty twenty-four uh for, over the next five years. Uh there's six major categories to that permit that relate to spill containment and pollution prevention and maintenance and public education and involvement. Uh the two that are highlighted here and for discussion tonight are our construction and post-construction water quality requirements. And so the the first of those is our construction site, uh sediment control and erosion control. Um B M Ps, these are temporary, uh B M Ps are best management practices. It's the, it's the broad inclusion of all of these water quality type um of elements. So these construction site B M Ps are temporary. Um they're put in place during a construction project, and then they're taken away once that construction site has been stabilized again with with grass or some other kind of ground cover to hold that uh soil in place and keep it from running off um onto adjacent properties. Uh we've had, so the examples of that are like what you see in the picture there with silt fence. Uh they might be straw bales or straw wattles, just di- a variety of different products used uh to keep that sediment on site uh where, so it doesn't get away from from the developer or the or the builder.
Wyatt, what kind of um, what tools do we have for enforcement of that? Um I'm asking in part because a friend recently had a very disruptive period when two separate homes were being constructed in her neighborhood, both of which had water flow and mud flow towards her home. And even though the city cited the the owners, um they paid the fine but didn't do any mediation or remediation. So what, what do we have that we can use to force compliance, basically?
Yeah, that's probably a a great question for Bill Heatherman, who oversees that inspection process. Um I will say that we, you know, we we do have a proactive approach. We do um have have folks on staff to go out and inspect those uh sites, uh try to maintain or or enforce that uh compliance. Uh what happens if somebody doesn't is really where I need Bill to come up here and grab a microphone uh and explain kind of what the other tools might be for that.
Thank you, Wyatt. Bill Heatherman, Stormwater Compliance Engineer. So um as far as the particulars of any specific case, I don't necessarily know which ones or go into that. Um in general, we stay on the builders uh once we either observe an issue ourselves through our proactive uh inspections or when we get calls from the public. And we do follow uh initial right away, get ahold of the builders, let them know they have an issue. We are um fairly aware of most construction that is happening and and make a weekly cycle through all the single-family homes during active construction season. So sometimes there are issues that we already saw, sometimes there's issues we haven't seen. Um we strive to get voluntary compliance and have a good relationship with the builders because uh the, if we have that, it goes faster. But we also have a notice of violation process and basically an ordinance authority we can cite. It it is not designed to get a heavy hammer, instant immediate change. Uh we would have to up- upgrade some of our enforcement tools if we felt like we weren't getting what we needed, and that's always a conversation we can have. Uh ultimately, the enforcement tools we have uh end with um in in a really extreme case, a stop work order, although the rules on that are pretty uh pretty onerous. We can also abate, which we go out and basically hire or do with our own forces and put something in place and then put that on the tax rolls. That can be a little tricky when you have a builder doing construction, because we don't want to go out and spend money and then have other people tear it up. Um or last is we can end up in municipal court, but you can imagine that takes quite a while for all that to play out. So we're striving to get faster and better, um but certainly it takes a while when there are actual problems.
So um uh what, the way that I'm interpreting this is I think maybe the the situation Susan brought up, it might have just been cheaper for the builder to pay the fine than it would have been to fix it? And 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 maybe we could escalate that in that case, but it does take a lot of time and by the time that gets done, maybe the construction's complete or something like that. Yeah.
I um, I I think we need that feedback so that we can understand what what people are saying. I have not perceived like a deliberate approach to simply ignore what we're doing from the building community. I think by and large, most in the building community do respond when we get hold of them. And when we switch into the notice of violation process on those occasions when we need to, we don't let it go until until we perceive that we've gotten. Now, sometimes the problem is towards the end of construction and and the main thing we're doing is just pushing people along to get finished. So certainly we can do some feedback. I don't perceive that we have like a widespread problem of just kind of deliberately waiting us out. I think more often is that construction is complicated. And sometimes with single-family homes, there's lots of trades coming in and out. Not necessarily a foreman that can tell you exactly what happened the day before. So we we spend a fair bit of time just making phone calls, chasing things down, trying to figure out what's going on.
And and in fairness to your office, I think that the person I'm thinking of was very satisfied with the city's intervention. It was the builder who was being obstinate, so.
So we do try to maintain positive relationships with all the builders and and, you know, encourage that voluntary compliance with those rules. Uh, we do offer an annual uh training day where where we buy everybody lunch and have them, you know, walk through a series of slides that kind of show how to do it right and how to do it wrong and provide some of the justifications for, you know, why the regs exist and 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 ultimately why we're asking them to to implement these things. We we recognize there's a cost to the silt fence there or the, you know, the measures they have to put in place. We recognize that it takes somebody some time to go and inspect them after each rainfall and make sure that they're repaired and not, you know, still working like they're supposed to. But we we do try to have that collaborative relationship to share information and and then follow up with those inspections um as we need to. The other side of the of this water quality requirement is the green infrastructure uh that is the the post-construction BMP and these are permanent features that are there to treat that water for the long term. And this is really where you see those examples that that I talked about at the beginning of this section with the the rain gardens or the vegetated swales or the different types of of structures. We really started this process uh back in two thousand eight with that first MS four permit. Um, at that time, we joined twelve other first-class cities, um, what became known as the Clean Twelve uh to work collaboratively to develop a BMP manual for how to meet this new requirement. Um, that was new at that time. By twenty twelve, um, that group had grown to twenty-one cities that had partnered to keep this conversation going. And in twenty twelve, we adopted the BMP manual, uh, which offers kind of a menu of options for developers and builders to utilize uh based on their specific site conditions and constraints and and, you know, parameters that they're that they're looking to meet. So it is kind of lays out all of these different options and and the design parameters for them and then how they could apply those uh to their specific situations. And so that's been around for for quite some time. And then those those were incorporated into the the stormwater management criteria update in twenty twenty-three. We have implemented since twenty twelve, uh, six city-owned projects have these type of features. Um, I worked personally with Bill on Anthony and Eisenhower. Uh, rec centers both have features like this. The Douglas Activity Center also has a water quality feature like this as well. Um, and then thirty-three private developments um have also implemented features like this on their sites. Uh, we started annual inspections in twenty twenty-four. And so we have a list of all the the BMPs that have been built and we're trying to get eyes on on a certain number of them each year. Make sure that they're functioning as intended, make sure they're being maintained as needed to make sure the water quality treatment aspect is still functioning and then working with those property owners to make sure that uh they bring them back into compliance if there are maintenance needs that those basins or features have. And so a lot of this is is based on educating consultants and developers and builders and property managers on what this obligation is um and how to and how to best meet it most cost-effectively for them. Uh, how how is that going? The construction site BMPs are generally well-accepted minus the the conversation we that we just had, uh, which I think is is a bit out of the norm. You know, there's certainly construction site issues that have to get worked out. There's challenges uh with some of that with the cost and the maintenance of that. But generally speaking, I think the construction side of of those temporary BMPs are are working okay. You know, we we do try to find reasonable solutions and and are not coming with a a heavy hammer from the very beginning to try to beat someone into compliance with that. But but really trying to help help that permit holder, whoever that is on the development side or that builder side, you know, meet meet that obligation in a way that makes sense. Um, our BMP manual, you know, is is really the tool that offers those those options uh for folks. Our post-construction BMPs are required for developments or redevelopments that disturb one acre or more, including projects less than an acre that are part of a larger common plan of development. So it does, it doesn't hit every project, but it does hit certainly larger projects or phased projects um in trying to implement that water quality aspect. Uh, implementation of that is really a lot more challenging on the post-construction BMP side than on the construction site BMP side. And so a lot of the concern and the criticism that we've heard recently about our regulations have come from developers and is centered on on how they meet this requirement. And there's there's generally, I think, some unfamiliarity uh with the requirement. Maybe they didn't have to do this on the on their last project. Um, or, you know, there's space requirements for these. They do take land area, uh, there is a cost to build them. Um, and then there's a long-term maintenance uh responsibility that typically passes to the either the the property itself, if it's a single site or an HOA or a group of homeowners, if in the case of residential properties. Um, in our experience, and it does seem easier for a commercial site or a public site uh to meet this requirement. Um, and that's in my view because there is typically an entity that is responsible for the maintenance of a site, a parcel, a building. And so you have that maintenance program, you have somebody coming to mow and to maintain various things. It it's harder on a residential subdivision where you don't have a single entity to deal with. You have a group of homeowners, maybe they have, in the case of water quality, they have to have an HOA or they have to have some sort of entity uh that can own and be responsible for that maintenance. HOAs aren't aren't actually new, but this this requirement of maintaining these type of this type of infrastructure um is something that we haven't had as much experience with in Manhattan, just based on the development cycle. So we are, we are trying to work through uh those issues with with developers. And it is real quick, that second, there that first picture there on the left, that is an example of what could be a place in a conservation easement. Um, so if you if you look out your back window and you and you have an area of a wooded, natural prairie type of a of a thing, um, it might be in a conservation easement. That conservation easement can be dedicated in order to meet a portion of your water quality requirements in a new subdivision or in a new site development. So it's not always a constructed feature. Sometimes you can utilize the natural features that are on a piece of property to meet that requirement because that water will filter through that woodland or that prairie zone as long as it's protected over time and you don't go cut down all the trees and make a patio out of it. So so conservation easements are a tool that can be used that we've offered certain developments to to meet their obligation here. Uh, so what what we're working on, uh, we want to continue that con that conversation with those in the development community. Uh, we want to finalize an alternative off-site program and we've got a the next slide kind of details that. Um, and then we want to continue collaboration with K-State and steal ideas from other communities as to how they're uh helping developers and helping builders uh meet these obligations. We do have a great partnership with Dr. Trish Moore at K-State, who's in the Biological and Ag Engineering Department, as well as other researchers and other other folks at K-State that are helping us um kind of learn some of these best practices and how to implement uh from a from a solid scientific engineering perspective. The alternative off-site BMP um compliance program is something that we spoke with you about in August twenty twenty-three. KDHE allows an alternative means of satisfying this EPA regulation for water quality uh for new development. Uh, the Wichita and El Dorado um have implemented programs under this idea. Uh, they're very different. Uh, we've we've kind of loosely based a proposal uh for our program off of the Wichita model, which has been been placed for quite a few years. Essentially, the developers would, it would be modeled after our fee-in-lie of detention program where the developers would voluntarily enroll their property. Uh, they would then pay a fee that is based on the essentially the impervious area that would need to be treated under a normal onsite circumstance. And then that act of enrolling and paying that fee would would satisfy their requirement for in perpetuity. The city would then have that obligation and we would use that fee to incentivize certain conservation practices in the agricultural world um outside of the city uh to meet that requirement at a two-times rate. So we would gain two, we would look to incentivize practices with ranchers or farmers and landowners that would reduce two times the amount of pollution uh reaching streams as what would normally be accounted for from an urban practice. And so we would envision a scenario where we would partner with K-State, partner with conservation districts to identify those farmers and landowners in the county or surrounding counties that were interested in um these type of conservation practices, uh modeled similarly to a CRP program out in Western Kansas. Uh, there are a number of state and federal programs that already offer incentives for certain types of practices. No-till agriculture is one example. Cover crops are another example. And so we could incent incentivize landowners to implement these practices, take credit for the pollution reduction that occurs on those properties and meet our obligation to KDHE and relieve some of the burden from local developers and homeowners to meet these obligations. Uh, obviously, there's some benefits. Really, it's it's a a win-win for a lot of folks from our perspective. We get two times the pollutant removal, which is a win from the environmental side. Uh, developers and homeowners no longer have that obligation to build these pieces of infrastructure and maintain them for the long term. The city doesn't have to inspect them. And the city works with those uh interested parties who are already doing some of these practices and we can help them potentially take that uh to the next level or or to continue that practice for longer term.
Wyatt, I I appreciate the model in concept. If all development for the next twenty years falls under this program, do we, are we compromising the safety of our community by not having enough? You know, by sorry, too many impermeable surfaces? Am I, am I, I'm not sure if I'm understanding the trade-off here.
I think the confusion is that this is for water quality, not to move stormwater onto somebody's ag land.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, this doesn't solve the problem of water running down your your street. It's it's how we, you know.
How we treat and improve.
Yeah.
Yes, this is, this is strictly meeting the requirement for for the for treatment, for water quality. And so it's dealing with those with suspended solids from soil that erodes off a property or the, you know, the fertilizers and things that that run off properties. And it moves that, those practices to treat that into an agricultural setting versus an urban setting.
Yeah.
All of the requirements for stormwater and the way for detention and the way we convey stormwater from where the raindrop falls to where it ultimately ends up, those all stay in place and so developers would still have an obligation to meet, you know, those requirements or, you know, detain water or pay a fee in lieu of detention. Uh, this offers another tool for developers to meet a separate regulation relative to the water quality post-construction BMP requirements. This the this doesn't affect the onsite construction, the silt fence and the, you know, during construction. There's still an obligation to do that, uh, but this would relieve that long-term permanent obligation.
Does that make sense? Okay?
So Bill Heatherman has been working extensively with Trish Moore and others um on this program. So if if there are uh specific questions or discussion that we want to have on this program here yet tonight, he would be a great person to get back to the mic to ask, you know, all of your detailed questions on. Uh, but the the informal feedback we have received um on this program model has so far has been very positive. We've met several times with KDHE um to kind of preview some of the the model as it's been developed. And they were, they were, have provided us good feedback and have have given us, you know, some positive reinforcement that they like the direction that we're headed. Um, as we floated this idea past, you know, some in the development community, uh, they viewed this as a positive as well. It's a way for them to meet the obligation um in a in a different manner that's potentially, you know, more cost-effective for for them and their the homeowners that will eventually uh buy their lots over the long term. And so, you know, the the feedback's been positive, you know, pending some further discussion tonight. You know, we we would aim to have a proposal uh with with all the details laid out for you this summer and then adoption in the fall uh pending approval by KDHE.
Wyatt, just to clarify, that is on just new development, not on if we're doing infill or different different things? Is that right?
The the water quality requirements are for redevelopment and and new development that meet that one acre threshold or, you know, other criteria. It it does not apply to just a regular, you know, a site that was developed ten years ago. So like, I don't have to, I don't have to do this for my house. If I were going to tear my house down and build a new house, may maybe maybe I would, right? If I met those requirements, but it is, it is new construction and redevelopment of existing sites.
Other question? Um, Wyatt, so we've got this subdivision that has maybe eight houses on it and there are three lots that aren't developed. And they're possibly because they're difficult to develop and they're at the top of the hill, so to speak. And they're going to be putting a lot more stormwater onto the to the present development. So how do we, how do we decide who's going to pay for all that extra water? Have to do that, right? I mean, you, you know.
If I follow the question right, there.
Oh, it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, in in an eight, in a subdivision with eight lots in it.
Yeah, well, just any, you know.
There there would have been a plan at the time that that subdivision.
These some of, well, there's these are older ones that don't sort of have.
Oh, if there's like a legacy
Yeah.
empty lot.
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay, that's probably two.
I'll jump, I'll I'll ask Bill to come up here if if he if he thinks he needs to. But um, I mean, I think that they would have to meet the standards that were in place at that time. And so
Okay.
if there was no, I see him jumping up here, so.
And yeah, I also wondered, how do we, um, do we plan with the county for some of these things? Or like Pot County, you know, we had the possibility of this company that was going to come and be in Pot County. And it was going to be Manhattan City. I mean, you know, so they were going to put stormwater into something. And um, so, you know, how do we work with the, into Pot County, basically? I mean, you know, there's going to be more water coming onto the land in Pot County from the thing we're building in Pot County, but now it's part of Manhattan. So do we have to work with them on that or are there there are plans for how that water would go someplace or?
Yeah, I mean, our our regulations would apply to, you know, sites that are within the city limits.
Yeah.
And so in in that case, you know, where we've annexed property out on East Twenty-four for some
Yeah.
development site, we would, we would expect whoever helps that site to meet the obligations both for detention as well as for water quality. If if their project met those thresholds, which, you know, that site in particular is large enough, it 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 would, it would meet the both of those requirements.
Thank you. That's my question. Other questions for, you guys must have some questions.
You may have said it, but I assume that the ranchers and farmers are pretty open to these programs.
I think, I mean, there are certainly some, absolutely. There, there are, there are existing incentive programs today that are, that are kind of moving agriculture forward. I mean, you know, it used to be that no, you know, no, no till was a new idea at one point and now it's being adopted more frequently. You know, cover crops are a newer thing. And so how do you, you know, from a, from a regu, from an environmental standpoint, how do you push folks towards those better environmental practices?
I just know when some of the flood things we talked about before, if you go back to the ranchers and farmers way upstream, it could really help, but they weren't too cooperative in wanting to do those things.
Yeah, no, these, these, the types of, and Bill, come on, jump up and fill in details. But I, I think the feedback we've heard is that, is that there are farmers and ranchers that are interested in these type of, of practices and, and there's a gap perhaps that we can fill, you know, between other incentives and other programs that are, that exist where we could really target and help those landowners that are already taking advantage of, of some programs to do more or to do it longer, to integrate it into their daily workflow. The, the expectation is that eventually, you know, what's, what's new today will become common standard in the future. And so how, how, how do we help people reach that common standard point? Bill?
I just wanted to say, so part of our feasibility study with Dr. Moore and K-State was to look at kind of supply and demand. And we, we think there's way more supply of potential partners than we would be using. And that's one of the reasons why we're structuring this, to look and feel very much like the federal and other state incentive programs. So that we're ba, basically help filling financial gaps. And then sometimes we can maybe be more flexible than federal rules so that we can maybe keep a producer on a contract three years longer if that's what it would take to kind of finish, you know, helping them make a transition. We have absolutely no intention of sending city staff out to help farmers directly with their operation. That would be a partnership we develop with K-State and the conservation districts and other groups that are already doing that kind of work. So we don't think we'll have an issue. The other thing is, these practices are the kind of thing that, well, if that field doesn't work, but there's one three miles away and it's still in the watershed, it counts the same. So it's a little different than some of the detention strategies where it was, you know, a very specific target area that you would have to get a critical mass in. And this is strictly voluntary, but we're confident we would have plenty.
So you bring up an interesting question, Bill. So these off-site, these off-sites have to be within a certain area? Like they have, they're, they gotta be within the watershed of Manhattan?
Right, and that's where, that's where we'll work that out with KDHE is to, okay, what's the map? You know, what, what's the equivalence map? That is where our position in the Kansas River kind of works to our advantage is that there's an awful lot that's upstream from us. And so you can work a pretty wide area and still be impacting something before our pollutant would have entered the Kansas River, if you will. I will tell you, Tuttle Creek is a state priority, the reservoir and the sedimentation issues. So KDHE is actually very interested in us kind of spearheading work that would partner with some of the work that's going on to conserve storage in Tuttle Creek reservoir.
So this, this isn't kind of like just buying off carbon credits and saying that we're carbon neutral. This is actually doing a proactive project to, to help with that pollution.
I mean, yes, there, there, there are tangible metrics that we will have to meet. K-State, for the city of Wichita, they give them an annual report that kind of sums up, you know, how much demand? How much have we done? So there'll be, there'll be tangible product to show for what we do. A lot of this, though, is on an annual basis. So we're going to take a fee that has to kind of propel us to be able to do things in perpetuity. The actual contracts with landowners may be on a three and five-year basis. So we'll have to constantly be producing. And, and to some degree, it is like carbon credits in that it is trying to meet an environmental obligation with a thinking outside the box as opposed to doing it exactly right here where it might be too expensive compared to other opportunities.
Sure.
Other questions? Who's in charge of cleaning up Wildcat Creek? Because I know we have to go in and move all the trees sometimes. Is it the county or is it us or do we share? Nobody knows.
I think, I think it depends is, is the short answer.
I'm sorry, what?
I think it depends.
Oh, it depends.
To the best of my knowledge, there's no like generalized government obligation to remove debris from a natural river.
Okay.
If there's a debris jam on a bridge, then whatever governmental entity owns that bridge has like the immediate need. And in a natural stream, there are debris jams which are just simply part of the system moving. If there are particular cases where a specific issue is arising and it kind of fits outside the box,
Sort of a dam or something?
Then we have to kind of address that. But usually it just goes to an underlying landowner. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean they're obliged to act. It just means there's not just some generalized duty for the city or the county to step in and do that.
Okay, I thought we had more issues with debris sort of damming up, you know, and when we had heavy rains, kind of making a mess with Wildcat Creek. But we don't go in and just sort of arbitrarily clean it out every so often.
Yeah, I mean, the ci, the city owns land adjacent to Wildcat Creek at certain points. We certainly don't own the full corridor or
No, 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 no.
You know, and so we have had it, we have had situations near linear trail at the south side of the community where we've gone in and where we own property adjacent and we were part of a, an effort to clear out some of those log jams. I'm sure there's been some privately handled examples of that as well.
Okay.
And so it, it's kind of a case-by-case scenario and, and who's calling and, and what, what does the, the threat assessment look like for that particular stretch of the stream? And is more rain coming and what are we going to flood if, if things don't move along, so?
When we talked about expanding the, the present water treatment plant and that kind of thing, we talked also about possibly having one on the west side of town. And we talked about using gray water for Colbert Hills. And is there anything in the future to talk about using gray, you know, gray water for any of the irrigation things that we do or?
I'm, I'm not aware of any of that.
Nothing on the books.
Conversation still happening?
Yeah, there's, there's, you know, quite a discussion because obviously golf courses use an awful lot of water and they don't need it to be purified. And, okay, any other questions? Are there comments from the public?
Wyatt, Wyatt, so that's five slides.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's one more bucket.
One more bucket, I'm sorry.
Our final bucket is, is our floodplain management program.
I said, that's my Wildcat Creek there.
Yeah, it, it does, it does apply to this area. Obviously, we're, we're managing open space along Wildcat Creek and the, and the Blue River and the Kansas River to prevent and mitigate damage from floods and, and move people or out of hazards way or, or reduce their risk of, of damage over time from, from flood events. And so obviously our, our, you know, the major floodplain management tool is the levee and we've done major upgrades there over the past several years. And, and Public Works has a responsibility to maintain that infrastructure. We do have, in 2015, we implemented higher floodplain standards based on future development forecasts. We are, in 2008, we became part of the community rating system, which is a point system that rewards us for extra efforts that we take to protect property and reduce flood risks. And there's, there's public outreach and flood insurance discounts that are a part of that program. We are a member as part, as associated with that, a member of the National Flood Insurance Program. And our CRS level and rating qualifies homeowners for discounts on their flood insurance as a part of the work that we're doing as the public entity. And then there's hazard mitigation. And so we've been involved in property buyouts for, to remove homes that were repetitive loss in, in flood-prone areas. We've added emergency signage, the turnaround, don't drown signage and the, and messaging that goes out as well as installation of river gauges to kind of help forecast when floods may occur or as the river's rising, we were able to monitor those situations and then respond accordingly. We do have a, a strong record of working with property owners to help them navigate the floodplain permit rules and regulations and, and what it takes to build in certain areas of the community and, and what it, and when they shouldn't build in certain areas of the community. So we do process those permits as expeditiously as possible to make sure that whatever is being built complies with FEMA standards or with our, our community flood zone standards. We, a lot of them are infill or commercial permits, kind of, you know, routine type of issues. We, we have had some, some unique experiences. Bill was telling me about the complex work we did as part of the airport runway project to, to deal with some floodplain management issues that were, that were out there at the airport. There are certain homes that are in the 1% flood range or in that zone or in the, the future 1% zone in that, in that higher standard area. And if, if they have a remodel or damage and have to rebuild and those meet certain thresholds, there are certain requirements that those homeowners have to meet to raise their, their home above a certain elevation. As we interact with those individuals, most of those, I don't think any of those remodels have reached that threshold yet. They've modified their project in some way to, to avoid the, the raising of their structure. But those, those regs are there and we are available to help people kind of navigate those, those challenges. Certainly lots of, prior to COVID, you know, several emergency risks and flood scenarios that we were facing. And, you know, our, our team was able to respond to those. And we were just talking today that, you know, in a couple of weeks, we have some training for our staff to, to renew ourselves on those SOPs, you know, what happens at certain, certain levels of the river? What, what do we deploy? What, when do we deploy? How do we deploy signage or road closures or emergency notifications and things like that? So that's things we'll be updating our staff on over the next couple of weeks. The good news is, is that there's really minimal new floodplain development currently. A lot of the new development is, is happening in, in other parts of the community that aren't part of these zones. But it is something that we're always aware of and, and are there to help the community kind of navigate those challenges should they own property in those areas. So what we're working on, we'll continue that CRS Level 6 commitment to maintain our, our higher standards, continue with opportunities for public engagement, public education. We will be working with Riley County on their Hazard Mitigation Plan update this year and continue our Public Floodplain Forum that we host annually as well as an annual briefing to you on, on their floodplain programs and our CRS program, which we typically do toward the end of the year, usually in November, is to keep you apprised of all the details of, of what goes into that. And then certainly we'll continue to outreach with, with neighbors and, and folks that are in those flood-prone areas to encourage them to, to purchase flood insurance, use that discount that the city has. That, that flood insurance program is really the mainstay of, of the, of the floodplain management program in order to reduce folks' risk when it comes to flooding. So our, our, we'd like to have a discussion tonight just to make sure that you're on board with, with our near and midterm priorities. We do have offered some one-on-one meetings with you all over the next month. If you're open to that for some more discussion and education on stormwater topics as we, as we plan to bring back some of these issues for you later in the year for decisions. We'd look to finalize and launch that alternative off-site BMP-CBMP program later this fall with discussion through the summer. We would look to begin inspections of our private detention basins this fall as well in order to add to our inventory and our understanding of that, of, of what's out there and the issues that we may face with those detention basins. We, then this, through the summer and into the spring, we'd look to update the, work with community development on the MDC, our ordinances, as well as amendments to the stormwater management criteria that we discussed to clarify some of those standards. And then continue that community engagement with those, you know, we have a number of other events and educational opportunities through the rest of the year to, to work with, with the community on. Our midterm priorities would be to integrate our stormwater requirements into the development review process with Opel. As we talked about at the very beginning, we would prioritize watersheds, potentially begin an evaluation of options for regional detention opportunities or fee-in-lie alternatives in some of the highest ranking or highest prioritized watersheds based on their development potential. And then develop, further develop that program to address detention basin deficiencies that we find through those inspections. So step one is the inspection and then step two, once we kind of understand what it is we're dealing with, we could develop a program as to how to address those and bring back options to you for further discussion. And I think I've got a slide where we could talk about these later, but this big picture wise, as we, as we wrap up, I think we've got a lot of great programs and studies that are in place to kind of provide a foundation for us to make decisions moving forward. We certainly want to align these stormwater programs with your priorities, with your desired level of service for managing stormwater and floodplain in the community. And then make sure that's all aligned with the vision for the city and our strategic plan. And certainly want to use community feedback and input from all those involved, homeowners, developers, builders, general public to, to guide our efforts and make these programs work for our community. So these are some discussion questions to kind of help get things started, but certainly looking for questions or feedback on the four buckets and what we're currently doing, things you're hearing from, from the community if we haven't already talked about it. And then your priorities, if, and specifically, are you ready for us to continue forward with our near and midterm priorities that we outlined on those slides?
If we were to move forward with these.
Public comments? Oh, before we hit the questions. Susan was asking, do we want public comment before we have questions? It's certainly whichever you would like.
I mean, I just had a quick question for a while. On the inspection of the basins, Wyatt, is that the privately owned ones that you're talking about? The hundred and?
I mean, I think, I think.
Seven?
I think we would include our basins in that as well. But yes, the, the real intent was to inspect the privately, the ones that are supposed to be privately maintained to get eyes on them, to understand, have they been maintained? What condition are they in? Are there issues with the outlet structure, with sedimentation, with, you know, issues that would, that would compromise their ability to function and just try to take that assessment to see where we're at.
Okay.
And then, and then develop a program to, you know, or options on how that could be addressed.
By the?
Either by the public, by the, by the HOAs or the homeowners that are supposed to maintain it by covenant or through a city-led effort to, to make those corrections.
Thank you.
Wyatt, my suggestion was just because I personally have not had any feedback from developers on this particular topic. But I know there are several in the room tonight. I don't know if they plan to speak, but perhaps we, what I was suggesting is that perhaps we should hear from them and then we, we can circle back.
Okay.
Certainly, we, we did.
Fine with, is that okay? Okay, let's hear from public comments then, and then we'll circle back and see if the commissioners have anything they'd like to add to the discussion. So just come up, give me your name and address and then sign up over with, then, oh, sign up on this side.
I'm Charlie Potter, Manhattan, Kansas. I've been here for fifty-seven years. I got a beef, number one, this. Thompson, are you here in eighteen? That flood? Okay. We got a property screwed up there on that deal, but they keep building out west and that's one of the problems, all the runoff. I'm not here for that reason, number one. Mr. Thompson, were you into this, the Dickens?
Sir, please direct your comments to the commission and not to city staff.
Well, Ethan got something to do with this, okay? That's reasonable, I'm talking to him.
Well, talk, talk to us, Charlie.
Huh?
Talk to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyway, the project at Dickens, the stormwater project, okay? That project was not completed, but they sold it.
Okay.
And I'll tell you what happened. This is no big deal. It could be repaired right now without any, much of a impediment, this traffic. But two, we had two pretty good size potholes. My wife was walking our dog and she tripped over one of them and got dinged up pretty bad. It's about two weeks ago. Fortunately, she's healing up okay. Now, she wasn't paying attention, but that could have happened to anybody, really. Just, she was walking the dog and the dog distracted, I think she tripped over the, the pothole. So anyway, those potholes need to be replaced. I talked to people at the city, they never called me back. I talked to people at the city, they never called me back. But like I say, this could be repaired pretty easily.
Charlie, have you got something to say?
Say again?
Do you have something about stormwater management you'd like to talk to us about?
That stormwater project they did on Dickens, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's, the project hasn't been properly.
Say again?
The project hasn't been properly.
Well, I mean, what's left is pretty minor.
Okay.
Okay, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
But it still is not finished.
Uh huh.
And the part of the curb needs to be repaired, but those two potholes, it'd be good if they were filled and it wouldn't get to take much to do it, get them filled so nobody's going to trip over them. Like I say, if you're paying attention, that's one thing, but it could have happened to anybody, really. So I'm not, I'm not blaming my wife, you know, but, but anyway, that's what I came here for.
Thank you.
To talk to that, because here's the thing, I really believe, we're not wanting anybody to kiss our derriers, okay? But we, the, us, the producers that supply the money for you guys to spend, we, we require a little bit of respect. That's all, no more, no less.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie, could you just be?
Thank you.
Charlie, Charlie.
Go sign in over there with your name and address.
I'm here.
Yeah, well, we'll find out. Okay, and other comments? Public, it's your chance. Yeah, I'll go drive to Dickens and figure it out. Sure, on you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Gary Oles. I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. This discussion, or presentation on stormwater interests me because I just want to better understand it. And I assume if I bet, want to better understand it than the people who are watching may want to better understand it. The most important thing that most of us can relate to in all this discussion, in a very broad sense, is our water bill that shows up every month and the fee that's on it. I make the assumption, just based on my understanding, is that fee creates a revenue stream for these types of, not all of them, but some of these types of projects.
Right, stormwater management.
Right, okay. I would like to know, and obviously you may not know, but how large is that fund? You talked earlier about the TDD and how much money was in it. I'm just curious, I don't really need an answer right now, but I'm just curious.
I, I think you can probably look up the budget and see what, what was.
You could do that, but you better have an accounting background and some other types of information.
There's a line item that says stormwater.
And what, two hundred and forty-seven pages or something like that, but nonetheless.
Okay.
So also just from an education standpoint, I assume that all stormwater that's captured runs into the Wildcat Creek or the Blue River or the Kansas River. I'm, I don't know, I think he said seven watersheds or something like that. So it all heads that way. The reason I'm asking that question is my understanding from many years ago was that fee that was implemented for stormwater had a, was a specific requirement by the EPA that filtered down through the states and to the cities. Because at some future point, depending on the size of your city, the captured stormwater, and I, when I say that, I don't mean the runoff, I'm, the permeos, the, the, like over by my house where we have a inlet there. All of that water at some future point is going to have to be treated before it's dumped into the river. That was, I was told that, long time ago. I want to know, is that still true from a, from a regulation standpoint? And if that is still true, is it true for a city the size of Manhattan? It may not apply, it may be, you know, LA or New York or something like that. So that's, that's a question that I wanted to find out. And I think that was the.
Okay, thank you. I think we can probably answer that question pretty quickly. There's no way to really catch all that rainwater and treat it.
No, not the rainwater. The, the water, the, the, the stormwater, I don't know the right terminology, the water that goes into the curves and, and through, like I have one by my house.
Uh huh.
And is captured eventually goes into Wildcat Creek or Tributary and then Wildcat Creek and then the Kansas River.
Yeah.
It's all supposed to be treated at some future point, but that may be.
Do you want to answer that question for us?
Hey Gary, well, Bill's coming up here, just, the stormwater and all of those funds, you can find that on the claims register on the, it's on the agendas from the first and third Wednesdays there, it'll show the budget and our expenses to date.
Okay, could you explain to us what happens with stormwater?
Okay. So I'll, I'll do both parts of the question.
Okay, thank you.
The stormwater utility fee is collected. I don't have the exact number, but Brian Johnson, our city engineer, always has good tabs on that fund. That fund funds nearly all of our basic duties. So the maintenance work we do, the street sweeping, the engineering design for ongoing maintenance, our water quality base program, all the education events, staffing, as well as a component to help fund capital improvements. It does not necessarily generate enough revenue to fund every capital improvement that we may want to do. It does not fund things that have been specifically designated to be development responsibilities, just like a lot of infrastructure is provided by the development project and then we take maintenance or some designated role. So it's not a catch-all for everything that may happen, but it is fundamentally the funding source that allows us to operate the stormwater management program that you've seen today. There is not, at this moment, a federal requirement that says that we will at some point have to treat all the stormwater that comes off of the land within the city limits. There is a federal requirement that we require new development and redevelopment to provide for their own treatment. So that bucket that we talked today about water quality, that is the full extent of the federal requirement as it exists now for stormwater-driven contributions. You know, laws change over time, implementation changes, there would be some significant technical challenges to coming up with a program that would accomplish that, but that's not what our current program is driven around. Our current program is driven around meeting the current federal regulation, which is for new development and redevelopments larger than an acre or smaller if part of a larger common planet development.
Thank you. Does that answer everybody's question on that?
Commissioners, our stormwater operating budget is a little over four million dollars annually.
We want to hear from you guys. This lady with a new hip.
Your knee.
Oh, your knee.
Thank you, I'm glad to have this update. It's been over a year that, since I really paid attention or got a briefing on stormwater.
Tell us your name and address.
I'm sorry, Linda Morse, twenty-one eighteen Spain Drive, Northview, actually. And I was really glad as a commissioner, I was able to represent Northview because there had never been a commissioner from Northview. And so maybe we can encourage more Northview people to run in the future again because it does make a difference. You know, we never, we can never do enough in our community with, because we have such drainage issues and river issues. But I have been really proud of the city, and I want to praise that, praise that history of buying out flooded properties, flooded homes, and the effort that this community mounts to help support flood victims. And I, it takes a long time, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of people giving of themselves just to do that. I don't know the status of whether we've purchased all of the flooded homes or if we still have a list to do. I have, I don't hear about it anymore, so I wonder if we're not doing it, but I, I'd like an update just to, if there are more properties that we need to buy. And I really want to support continuing to meet the FEMA requirements in order to lower our flood, flood insurance for our residents. And that's especially important, at, at least in the Northview area and in the, the Wildcat Creek area. Because my flood insurance, because of the efforts of Manhattan, my flood insurance is lowered by twenty percent that I have to pay every year to FEMA. And so that's significant, it makes a difference and it's good to know that the community is working on our behalf. On behalf, and I, I wish there were more people here from Northview, but I'd like, at some point, I want to, I'm going to ask for a meeting for Northview about the new flood, stormwater provisions and what it might mean for Northview and the, it's been a long time since Northview has had a, or the city even, you know, twenty-eighteen was the last flood on Wildcat Creek. And the Blue River doesn't get a lot of attention, most of the, most of the attention goes to Wildcat Creek. And, but I think Blue River is just as dangerous and can be just as active, depends on the year. And thank you, just wanted to make those comments.
I'm Peter Clark with BCC Development and also Buyer Construction.
And address, Peter.
And I'm actually a Womigo resident.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Buyer Construction's.
You have every right to have an opinion.
Rested in the community quite a bit. I just wanted to speak on behalf as a developer. And I think I want to applaud staff there doing a really good job and it's a very difficult job to maintain and take care of all the infrastructure we have in the city. There's a lot of it. We've grown significantly in the last couple of decades and a lot of experiences with the growing pains as we built out this system that we have and, and how it's maintaining and how it's performing. So I want to applaud them for that. One input I'd like to put is that one of the recommendations, one of the near-term priorities of making some updates to the drainage impact studies and development code criteria is targeted for updates by spring of twenty-twenty-six. If I were to give any input, I'd say that, you know, as the development community would like to see probably, at least I would like to see potentially engaging earlier and seeing stuff that would happen a little bit faster than by next year, if we could. But that's, that's my input that I like to see. But the engagement we had had with staff is great, so we just want to continue and see if we can expedite that process to get to some revisions sooner than a year from now.
Thank you. Go sign in, Peter. Other comments? I cut you guys off if you don't get, okay, I don't see any more. A direction for staff or more comments from you all?
I had a question for Wyatt, actually, it's three questions.
Oh.
Well, I would think as you guys were going through this, you probably have a feel for if you, we move forward based on what you've recommended, what the biggest complaint's going to be, the biggest problem you're going to have to overcome, and what's the biggest cost component you think's going to come out of it?
Out of, out of.
Out of, out of all that stuff that you're, I mean, I, I would just think as you put it together, some things probably popped out to you, like, this is what I think's going to come up, that's going to bother people a lot. This is something that's going to be our biggest problem to overcome and this is probably the one that's really going to drive costs up. Do you have any feel for those three things?
Sure, I'll take them maybe backwards. Cost-wise, if we decide to address detention basin deficiencies as a city responsibility, there could be substantial cost to correct those basins that were under private maintenance that maybe haven't been maintained to a standard. If we.
And if we did that, we'd have to decide how much we're going to take on, how much we're going to make them pay.
Correct.
To, to get it and it would be kind of a negotiation.
But, I mean.
Who does what?
Today, our, the covenants are set up and the policy is in place that the HOAs or the homeowners and the property owners would have, would have that responsibility. If we wanted to deviate from that, it could come at significant cost to the city at, on some sliding scale perhaps, if there's a partnership or if it's all city or if it's, if we want to push for private maintenance. That's why we, we suggest beginning that with an inspection so we can get a better understanding of what really is happening in those hundred plus.
Do you notice there much law on that? Like if we just, someone's just isn't taking care of it, do we have the right to go in and say, we're taking it over and you're going to be assessed?
We do, that's what the restrictive covenants that are on those bases allow, allow the city to go in and make the improvement, make the, maintain it and then assess those property owners back. So should, should we choose to have some responsibility to assist those property owners in that, there could be a sizable impact and cost-wise. And so that's, that's why this is really a two-stage priority. The first stage is to go do the inspections and then come back and report on what we found, what we think the resolutions might be. There may be very simple things that homeowners could absolutely handle on their own at limited cost. There may be significant, a significant issue out there that we need to uncover and, and dig into and, and maybe there's more discussion we could have on those type of projects. So that's one that could, that could drive cost. One that could kind of drive dissatisfaction, depending on how our updates to the MDC and our ordinances and the stormwater management criteria go, I think that could make people happy. And I think it could also potentially not go far enough, or we change something and there's some unintended consequence. I think we're going to do our best based on the feedback that we've heard and that we will continue to gather as we work through those changes to try to satisfy the requirements and find that common road between what, what we desire from a regulatory and compliance and safety perspective and what, you know, developers and builders and homeowners want to see. But I think working through those new standards and that amendment, and I, we're using the amendment term there, it's not a rewrite of the SMC. We feel like the twenty-twenty-three standards are a good starting point, but there are some clarifications that we'd like to make in that timeframe. We have spring twenty-twenty-six to address Peter's question or, or point. That's really to address all of those things. I think we could prioritize those clarifications to the DIS requirements, for example, earlier in that process and then work through some of the larger issues with the MDC or ordinances or other things, kind of on that tail end of that timeframe. But certainly want to, want to get those requirements adjusted in a timely fashion for folks.
Could the neighbors create a benefit district for that kind of thing?
To deal with their detention?
Mm-hmm.
Basin, potentially?
I mean, we do it for, for alleys and things like that, you know, when it benefits everybody in the surrounding that would sort of average this cost out more widely to the people who are really benefiting from it.
Yeah, there, there have been some stormwater improvements that we've made along, off of Browning Avenue, for example, that, you know, benefited several homeowners there and, and they, they formed a benefit district to, to pay for that improvement. And, you know, there's always conversations about city share versus homeowner's share, but, but yeah, that is one financing mechanism that we could utilize to defray or defer that cost over time, make it more palatable. John, what was the last one, the third question?
Yeah, one was the cost component, which you answered. The one I'd say was kind of the complaint when you answered, which, which is kind of, we can't please everyone, we're going to make some people happy. The other one was, which is the biggest problem, like what do you see is the greatest degree of difficulty you have to do to, in there is, is there one that provides the, what's the one that provides most technical challenges to you?
Biggest technical challenges, I mean, could, could be the inspection and the resolution of the issues with the detention basins, the same as the cost. You know, it could be, you know, if prioritizing the watersheds and evaluating alternatives, you know, to require or for the city to take the lead in planning regional detention or just from a technical standpoint, the engineering work that goes into determining if a fee and lieu program is a viable option. There has, there's a process to do that and certain standards to meet before we could recommend a program be in place for a certain watershed. And so there, there, there are some technical aspects to that, second to last bullet, that I think could, could pose some challenge, but certainly not anything insurmountable. We've implemented two fee and lieu programs for two existing watersheds and our staff are very familiar with the steps it will take to evaluate and recommend further options if that's supported by the science.
So, thanks, I appreciate it, that was really good. I mean, I thought the presentation was really good and I think we need to go through this. I mean. Thanks. I appreciate it. That was really good. Um, I mean, I thought the presentation was really good and I think we need to go through this. I mean, it could be something to get everything fixed and brought up to speed. Um, it's going to take a while and could cost a good amount of change, and hopefully we can do it as far as those regulations and ordinances, so it doesn't add a lot to the development cost and process, because obviously we're trying to develop as fast as and as cheaply as we can.
Absolutely.
Uh, Wyatt, to address your, what are we hearing? Um, and I'll be honest, this could go back a little bit further in time, but I think from some of the development community have heard, maybe not as clear answers on what to do with stormwater, maybe a little bit of back and forth. Um, I do recognize the position you guys were in, and people want consistency and predictability, but also want flexibility in their projects. So I, I do think it's kind of a tightrope. We have to walk on that to, to figure out what works best for each project. I mean, I think it's great if we can streamline this, but knowing that there are going to be things that will fall out outside of what can probably be put within that program. And I think just hoping we err on the, the side of, um, safety, but also expedience and getting answers to developers and helping move the projects forward. So those will be my only comments. It's a very comprehensive presentation.
Yeah, and that, that development review, you know, management of, of that workload and, you know, who's involved in that from a staff standpoint and what are our internal timeframes and how we manage that communication is something that we've been working on over the last, um, you know, several months to try to streamline that, you know, even absent the technology tools that are coming, which I do think will be very helpful, just using the tools we have today. How do we reset that expectation and how do we, uh, work with developers to get them answers quickly or more quickly or help them, you know, get them the information they need to make their decisions in a more timely fashion. So we, we've heard that feedback as well and are trying to take steps to, to make that an easier process.
And also I was fortunate enough to sit in on a pre-development review, and I thought that went really well with, with all the teams involved in giving feedback on projects.
Good. Thank you.
I don't really have much to add, but hell of a job, given a hour-long, uh, talk and
There's lots of buckets.
Not reading completely off of the slides, so thank you.
I guess just responding to number three, a pretty dang high priority. I, I think having lived through two of the floods here in our community in the last twenty years, twenty-five years, um, I've I haven't personally experienced the damage that many families did. Um, I think we just need to continue to protect our community as much as we can. And certainly overall water quality is just essential. So, um, I, I feel very comfortable with what you have laid out tonight as practices to put into place as a strategy for moving forward as the steps you're going to take. So, um, we'll look forward to those individual discussions that you've, that we will be scheduling and, uh, get diving into this a little bit more. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the priority. You know, it, it is, you know, those who were here in ninety-three, those who were here in eighteen and nineteen and experienced the other floods. You know, they have, you know, Charlie, Linda, you know, spoke about that importance and, you know, they, they have that knowledge. Not everyone has that context and history, and, and so it is important to remember that just because we haven't flooded recently, that those risks are there and we do need to take steps to mitigate that risk and protect residents and, uh, plan for those events if, if and when they happen in the future.
I think I still have blisters from filling sandbags.
Sadly, the city did not avail themselves the opportunity to buy, uh, after ninety-three to buy the, out the flood properties. And the, the county didn't, so we we have Hunter's Island, all the bad trailer courts that were there and everything, you know, but, um, yeah, okay.
There was a question real quick, Mayor, about the, the flood properties.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, there, there was a period of, of several years where we were acquiring, uh, properties in the Village Drive area, the Fairman Lane area, in, along that bend in Wildcat Creek. Um, those were all voluntary, uh, buyouts, and we were using, uh, various federal fund or state funding sources to do that, you know, with, with the, the voluntary nature of the, of the homeowner coming forward and saying, I want to participate in this. Uh, we have not purchased a hundred percent of the properties that were in those areas that were at risk of, of damage. So there are still a few homes that are potentially at risk that, that are there. Um, I don't know of any current funding sources that like what we had previously. We're certainly open to those conversations if there are property owners in those flood-impacted areas that, that want to discuss a, a buyout option. They can certainly contact us and we can sit down and try to understand what, uh, what options might be available for them.
That's good to know. Other questions? Do Danielle and Jason, do you feel you have direction?
Yes, we do. Um, I just want to verify, uh, with Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, do you have, uh, the direction that you need regarding the alternative off-site? Post-construction BMPs?
I think I heard support for continuing down that path. Um, I'm looking for some head nods. Thank you. So.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we would anticipate bringing back a, as, at a second work session, kind of focused just on that program. There is a lot of background information in that terms, that feasibility study. Um, it is somewhat very, parts of it are somewhat engineering-heavy, but we'll try to summarize those things and, and summarize the intent of the program in more detail than we've done tonight. Um, and before we take that to KDHE for their approval, the, your approval, their approval has to get timed. Um, there are certain steps that need to be taken by you in terms of enacting an ordinance to create the program and some resolutions to spell out the details that we would, uh, potentially present drafts to at that future work session. So we'll start working on those things.
When I drive home tonight, I will see little eyes looking at me from the stormwater, um, things, the raccoons seem to love listening, living near.
Yes. Well, thank you for your feedback tonight.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay, we're up to manage, city manager's report briefing. Oh, um, before we start, Danielle, before we start yours, um, Susan went to a, to a, two-day conference, and she was going to kind of report back a little bit on that to us. Is that it or not?
I did go to a two-day conference, but I, that's not what I was going to report on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to just mention that yesterday I did attend, um, the first meeting of the town gown
Oh, yes, sorry.
coordination group, um, in quite some time. Um, there were several things that are just relevant to topics that we've discussed recently. Um, as per the Convention and Visitors Bureau, K-State is undertaking a conference and guest services strategic planning process themselves. You may have heard that there are thoughts of, um, developing a Hearn into a conference facility. They have been collaborating with the Huddle Up Group or have been in discussion with the Huddle Up Group as well, so, um, hopefully they won't be competing with the city with, um, Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to just report that a small amount, amount of each rental from the electric scooters will be going to the town gown fund. Um, it's not much. I think it'll be about, um, ten or twenty thousand a year, but every little bit helps. Um, K-State one oh five was not funded by the state legislature this year. They are committed to continue to do projects that focus on economic development, but, um, that direction may change a little bit, or the focus may change a little bit. Um, I asked about, um, a lot of earmarks have been stripped from the federal budget, and I asked about that potential impact on K-State. For the moment, they think that that seven million that they announced several weeks, several months ago about the, um, bio-development labs is secure, but, um, it's not perfectly well-known. Um, they do have, they have launched a new website, which, um, K-State EDU dash, um, twenty twenty-five federal transition in order to track the impact of federal decisions on the university. They are anticipating that changes to immigration policy will impact recruitment of international students. Um, you may be aware that students and faculty received an email about a week ago advising them not to travel out of the country, which will have impact on research, on conference attendance, on, uh, people being able to go home and see their families and return to their studies. And finally, um, I will be meeting after graduation with a faculty member who helps to coordinate Welcome Week. The, there were members of student government present at this meeting, and they expressed an interest in having greater city participation as a way to help the students feel more comfortable beyond the, the confines of campus in Aggieville. We specifically talked about possibly, um, parks and rec so that they could become aware of other, um, activities that are available in the community as well as possible opportunities for part-time jobs, doing, uh, uh, working as refs, working as instructors, whatever. So, um, I, I just wanted, because we have been talking about trying to strengthen our relationships with both the university and, uh, the county, I thought it was important that you have an idea of what we're talking about.
I think we have to realize this is really, um, my neighborhood has a number of, of faculty who are, uh, on green cards, and they're very, very concerned, and I hate to see this. I mean, these are people who are full professors, you know, and, um, there shouldn't be any question. They're from Europe. They're not heaven forbid, from the Middle East or something, but, um, they, they're really concerned.
Yeah.
And, you know, they don't want to go home to see family and not be able to come back in the fall. So.
Karen, can I, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I would also just like, since Director Stewart is still here, I would just like to acknowledge that Sunset Zoo announced its official certification as being sensory-inclusive. This is particularly targeting, um, individuals who may have autism, dementia, PTSD, or other conditions that might make, um, their visiting the zoo uncomfortable or disturbing. Uh, staff have received training in how to accommodate these visitors, and, um, sensory bags are going to be available at the ticket kiosk. So if you anticipate that there might be a problem with someone in your party, they have noise-canceling headphones. They have fidget
Good.
pops and, um, several other, uh, tools available. So congratulations on that. I appreciate that you're looking at the wider, wider members of our community who are often not appreciated or recognized for that, so.
Okay. I could have used the noise, noise thing at grow green today. It was so loud. Trying to take people's money and I could barely hear them. I managed.
A quick update. Uh, you'll have the various meetings that we have, uh, up before you, so if anyone, um, would like to RSVP, uh, as we sit here today, Jared will happily take that down and report that back, um, for you. Tomorrow, uh, April Established Business Leaders Luncheon Learn, uh, they have a very prestigious speaker. Uh, she will be covering uh, community updates and the Orange Cone, um, update, as well as, they asked me to talk a little bit about, um, our housing initiatives, uh, that we have, um, going on as well as, um, budget strategy and, um, economic, uh, growth strategies. So we'll be diving into that a little bit. Uh, intergovernmental luncheon on Monday, the April twenty-eighth, uh, military relations luncheon, uh, on Wednesday, May seventh, and then, of course, um, our joint city-county-county meeting, uh, which was scheduled for, I was that the, yeah, the, May fifteenth? Uh, we are replacing that with the, uh, meeting, uh, with the school board, um, and the county to talk about, uh, RHIDs. So, uh, one of the things that we do need to discuss is which, um, who of you, uh, would like to represent, uh, the school board has invited to? So, um,
I, um, Susan asked if she, said she was interested, and I would be interested.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, anything else from?
The last thing that I had.
Uh-huh.
Um, just to give you a sneak preview, uh, staff really does appreciate, um, the opportunity to come before you all and, uh, share what we're working on at these work sessions. And so, uh, thank you for your time, um, and thank you for the opportunity for more of a dialogue and discussion. Um, but one, a couple of things that we have coming up at our next one, uh, workforce, housing, sales, tax applications. Uh, we have received three, so we will be going over those on, uh, May thirteenth. Uh, we will review the cemetery proposals that we have received, um, and then also for the cemetery improvements. Um, and then also our street project update. We will be going over those on May thirteenth as well. So just a sneak preview. And then, of course, uh, we will not be having a meeting on May twenty-seventh, so hopefully you all, uh, if you have an opportunity to extend your Memorial Day plans, you will do so. That is all I have for the evening.
Sounds good.
Meeting next week?
No.
No?
Next week is.
Next week's fifth week. Great, okay.
Just real quick, I would ask if we have opportunities for only two of us to share something, maybe we could have more of a discussion. I was also interested in RHIDs. I understand if Karen, that falls to you to make that decision, but just in the future, if we could have more
Yep.
discussion.
Yeah.
I would just like to update people who are watching or listening that grow green, which John told me you could still make contributions until midnight tonight. But thus far, it has, members of our community have contributed one point eight five five million dollars.
Wow, that's fantastic.
That's, um, close to seven thousand individual gifts.
And up to seventy-five hundred of each group will be matched half?
No, up to fifteen.
Oh, up to fifteen, it'll be matched. Yeah.
And John, uh, the Manhattan Catholic schools, but you, and you also got two of the drawings.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, I think that was fixed. I crumpled it up. Okay, thank you very much for your attendance, and we'll see you.
May I move to adjourn?
Yes, you may.
I, I move that we adjourn the, what day is today? The twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
May twenty-second, meeting of the Manhattan City Commission.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Manna.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor McCollough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Jack. Motion passed.